I figured out it's pre-temperature, not my thing. But we have to go over today. You got like two sections of me. I was about to have an aneurysm in there because it's like every time they moved the double doors, it cost me $100. Like, "Do you want another drink?" "Yeah." "You want some dessert?" "Yeah." "Two bucks." And it was the same way, it cost us $100 or something.
They're the same year, just one was closer.
And I was like, I like over the double doors place. There's one over there. It looks like a library. You expect to see.
That's the second one, that's the fourth that we're looking for.
But. We figured out real quick that's a lot. You know, so like fewer than most type.
See, I told you it's not gonna work that way.
I heard. I heard it for a second, but it was like a slight. I'm happy. I see. It's a nice one. That's the one that can be converted into like a.
It's technically a.
A period. Yeah.
TJ? No. Don't. It's not gonna work.
It did for a split second twice.
It is so.
Amplified a lot.
It's too. Yeah.
This thing is not starting recording.
Right?
Can you figure out how to get this thing recording?
Yeah.
Yeah. There we go.
And all of them have to be marked back.
Does that have to rip out?
Is it? Cause all the ones on the only side, they got him and Anthony have to.
Yeah.
So Anthony got.
Mute, is there my mute?
Yeah, and it's, and it's not gonna go into what was for the house. Right in the middle.
There is one there. Is it worth having?
Well, that's why I'm wondering if they should go to the.
It must, it must have.
Yeah, I didn't know how they did that.
Yeah. I don't know, I think, I think there's one like, there's also one.
West of the house. It used to be a trail of that.
Well, yeah, for my garage, yeah, I have this, that was.
Yeah, there must be, and there's also one that I worked from my, my brother's houses to where. Nathan's house, that one.
There's a health there.
When the.
Yeah, cause I'm not catching anything with Anthony's, and I was out there.
Yeah. I mean, there's a few, and there's a few around. That is abandoned, yeah. I guess that's something. I should plug it up here.
Microphone is apparently not working, so we'll still have to go back. Okay, we're recording. Down at Triad, Board of Trustees Special Meeting, July 14th, 2025, 6:00 PM, First Baptist Church, 122 North First Street. Number one, call order. Number two, roll call.
James here.
James here.
Jenna here. Nathan here. Richard here.
How are you doing, Corey Asher, sorry. Thank you, sir.
I am number three, consideration, discussion, action on the building project.
Anyone want to start this? Anyone want to start this?
Anywhere you want.
Are they, have you introduced themselves to them?
Oh, yeah, since I'm in board. This is Corey Asher, he's.
Hi, Corey here, Richard Meyer. James Hampton.
Hello.
Jenna here.
Hello.
Nathan Jones.
Hi.
And I'm John Fox, Utility Department.
Okay, nice to meet you guys.
Questions or?
We, we had a meeting over at the building just to see what it looked like.
Okay.
And there were a couple items that we saw that weren't up to supposedly code.
Okay.
Uh, main thing was the closet has to be fifty or sixty inches wide, it's fifty-nine and a half with all dreadwall.
Um, you talking about the, the storage closet? So. In, in terms of closets, there, there has to be a thirty by forty-eight area for. Anywhere within that room and things have to be, you know, certain.
Twenty-seven inches.
Off the floor, so in, in terms of the sixty inches, what you're talking about, I think you're referring to the bathroom.
What we're talking about is the closet itself.
Any enclosed space that being used for ADA twenty-ten.
Okay.
On a municipal building or a governmental building, yes, it has sixty inch circle for turnaround, for turn around.
Right.
You have to have two, one on each end of the closet.
Okay.
I think what I read on that was as long as you, cause it. With ADA, as long as you had a sixty by sixty turnaround at the end, and sixty and sixty turnaround at the front, I think we're probably good.
It doesn't, it doesn't have to be continuous, right?
Yeah.
No, it's, it's, it's a sixty inch diameter.
Yeah.
For the turnaround itself.
Okay.
And that's at the beginning and since it's so long, I think at the end, like we're discussing, I think at the end, I think that should be good enough. So, make ADA.
Right.
So. The shelves, I think it's.
Forty-eight inches.
Forty-eight inches, right.
Uh, no, maximum of forty-eight inches, it has to be twenty-seven inches off the ground to be able to support getting any need clearance. Um, and I believe it's forty-two, thirty-six or forty-two inches wide is for the access itself.
I think we've got that, would that.
As long as we have twelve inch shelves or narrow work in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was one thing that, that wasn't really, but there wasn't a ton of detail that we discussed necessarily. And in, in terms of what goes in there, that's still open for discussion, absolutely. I mean, it's your building, you guys can do whatever you want, but I shouldn't say open for discussion, it's your choice.
And I think what was raising, raising the eyebrow when it was the, when she factored your eye wall and the trim work or anything, your question. Your question forty, fifty-six, or forty-six.
Yeah, and.
Fifty-nine and a half. Fifty-six. Inch or four, five inches in the shriv, driveway, you're still gonna be at about fifty-eight, fifty-seven.
And we're going ahead and it's, you know, trying to stay ahead of potential issue.
Yeah, sure, I understand.
So could we take with a five foot section of that wall and just move it out three to five inches?
Sure. Yeah, and we can adjust for that. Would, would you want that, uh, and you're saying on the, on the end and then right in the doorway, the credit?
I think coming in the doorway was fine, wasn't it?
It, it should be because we, you'd have to have that sixty inch diameter at the entry point, so that means the shelves can't be there for a couple feet.
Right.
But with that open doorway behind it, it should help with that, it's that, that end apart.
Right.
Where someone would have to turn around.
Just out and.
Or put into the doorway on the other end.
But then again, though, you still need to have a five foot wide section for them to go make the turn. So. Which would kinda ruin that wall.
Basically, we're standing to the side of the middle.
Okay.
And then just taking this way and walking up to that.
And where is this, I'm sorry?
The, the whole wing of that.
Please keep up. Sorry.
But they were talking about right there on the, the, the diva wall between the office and the closet.
Okay.
Just that entire panel, so the simplicity of just separating it, moving it six inches and, and leaving the clearance along the edge of that window for trim work by adding a segment to it.
Okay, right.
So, so you're only moving it that, the whole thing that far?
Yeah.
So the wiring that's going through and behind that would be just pulled out, the wall removed, and then put back in.
I, I think what I would like to do is, is walk it with someone to show me exactly what you're after there.
Cause I mean, that, that would be the, the least amount, you know, a couple of bodies and separation.
Yeah.
Slide and put it back. And no, no rework per se, other than sticking one to before and scooping over.
Yeah, yeah.
And that, and that puts it out to, you know, sixty-five or sixty-six inch.
Sure.
Raw space, and then once you trim it down, you're still.
Is that what everybody, everybody's on board with that?
How much, any changes that we make, I never tried the cost. So, roughly.
I mean, if, 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 if it's, if it's something that we installed and it's not up to code, that's on me.
Okay.
Hundred percent. Now, if, if it's something where you wanna change the whole design of the layout with the plans that we're provided, then that's a different story.
And that's, that's why we were looking at that as being just a simple shift it.
No problem.
And that would be the least amount of effort and work and less damage to any material or anything, because all you're doing is just remounting it, sliding forward.
And it wouldn't be the first time in the history of a project that something is completely like, it is a minor change, so.
Cause it is, I would, I would technically like say, it is.
Oh, it's right on, yeah.
It's six inches without the drywall.
Without the drywall, without the trim, yeah, yeah.
So it just needs a couple inches.
Yeah.
And, and really. The way it is right now.
Right.
There's a two before right here before, it's basically just to the east side of that two before. And on our end is where this two before is, it's creating a window frame, add one to it and do the same thing, six inches over.
Yeah.
So you're just shifting.
I'm fairly certain I understand what you're saying, uh, but again, like, I don't know how much time you guys have, but if somebody has, like, after we leave here, black it out and I need to look at it.
Sure.
Sorry, I think we're watching him.
I think that would be good. But yeah, I'm, I'm with you guys.
Uh, we went through basically the whole building, looking at different things that may or may not be ADA compliant.
Okay.
Uh, we have one bathroom that is, that's the public bathroom. I think Jenna said the other one wasn't, but had changed the door, swing of the door or something to make it work.
So it's not big enough to be an ADA bathroom, however, with only having two bathrooms, only having the, the public one at handicap accessible, still make, meets that fifty percent requirement. And it would be, and since it's the one that's available in the public and everything, it's not like it's an undue expectation for a handicapped employee to go to that one instead of walk through the kitchen. So it should be good.
Yeah, you just need, yeah.
The one thing I had a question is with the kitchen, there's a doorway that goes into the kitchen from the library area. Um, and it kinda shares a corner with the doorway into an, an office right in the middle.
Okay.
Um, the door frame is almost like right up at that point.
Yeah, you're talking about right here.
Yeah, um, so one of the things is for wheelchair accessibility, there should, shouldn't there be eighteen inches between the, uh, the wall of that kitchen and the, where, where the door opens?
So what we've, what we've done with this area right here, uh, cause that, this is something that we don't have a lot of detail on. Again, you know, there's a couple of things like, uh, like this, I say this, like everybody can see it, but if you look at the.
Wishing.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's like a, a kitchen window basically is what I can. So I can think of.
Yeah.
Uh, and then, so in the foyer, uh, foyer, however you wanna say it, this little window, those are things that we need to address, uh, that, that really never have, and hindsight's twenty-twenty, right?
So, I mean, but you guys had like blueprints drawn up before you started construction, right?
Um, yeah, yeah, sure. I mean, we didn't have these drawn up, we were provided these.
Is that all you guys have with blueprints done?
Correct.
So in order for you guys to know where the, the plumbing fixtures would be, be put in before the slab was poured, where the outlets need to be dropped, any of that?
Um, so that is, I mean, these are the, these are the, the plans in terms of, of framing, but there is a set that has the, uh, the toilets and the labs and all that good stuff on it.
Would it be possible to, to get a copy of that?
Absolutely.
Cause I think that was one of the questions, it was the kitchen, we weren't even sure exactly where the sink is gonna go, side was even gonna be on here.
Okay, yeah.
And then get a line here.
Yep.
And then get outlets along here, but there is a, I don't understand, because it doesn't. Well, and that was.
Don't throw me into that.
Well, we were all, we were all looking at going, what's gonna go here?
Well, I know the kitchen seat's going on the east.
Yeah.
The north wall.
Cause there's boxes, there are.
There's a drain there, there's lines there, so I know this, and then, uh, the hot water tanks going with other drain is, so I mean.
Yeah, this is the HPA, so.
The one we couldn't figure out is there, it looks like there's a water, uh, fixtures, uh, setup right in the middle of the wall of that middle office.
Right here.
Yeah, what is that for, none of us know.
It's, uh, the water fountain.
Water fountain.
High-low water fountain.
So, but if we put, but that's where we're gonna have the library desk at, so if we have a water fountain there, we can't have the library next to it.
I don't have to look at the newer, the newer things or whatever, see, I, I thought that was.
Your place.
Well, the ones where he said that the bath, like the toilets and stuff are marked on there, I think that there's like a, how she had the library setup, I think she may have moved that, but I would hope to see that.
And the library wasn't permitted, so that was just a general idea for the poly, she.
Right.
Yeah, uh, yeah, yeah, I think that, that's the high-low water fountain. Uh, Mr. Highley, the inspector, that was one of, he, he provided us with a list of absolute things that we must have, and that was one of them.
So who's like put in there instead of factor by the bathroom, or some of that same form, easier form and everything?
I would, just somewhere along the way, that's what was, was decided. I mean, all the work that we're involved in.
Cause when we were walking there, you said you had no idea where.
Well, I was kind of telling you what it was, but once I, when I got the board for the, uh, the change order for that, I remembered us talking about it, uh, when we were walking through, I wasn't quite sure what it is, but just got lost and I looked at the actual.
Right.
I, I would say that there.
Those changes should have to go through the board, right?
Yeah, the board has to, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, we have.
That's why the, we, this is our third, uh, change form that we kind of.
Right.
But the first one since you guys have been here, the other two is the last one.
I just don't remember any of the meetings or anything that talked about adding a water fountain.
No, we did, we talked about it, I don't know what it was. We did.
Do you know which meeting? Cause I missed, I missed one meeting in, uh, twenty-seven months. The only one I missed was.
That's fine.
But we have to have the high-low water fountain, right?
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, I, I would say in every month of events, you know, there, I, I don't know what happened in the, in the last meeting, but I wanted to speak with everybody as a whole. To get on the same page, you know, there's, there's the whole board, there's the.
I know you, you were kinda asking for this for about four or five weeks now, so.
Yeah, and I think it was just a, a miscommunication maybe, you know, I, I, I would love to leave, Brittany's done a great job of being in point of contact, but I think, uh, having to go through her and then it's relayed and then it comes back and the information gets lost. At, at times, uh, you're pitchman is worthless, but, you know, maybe there's an area where we're all involved in the conversation, because, uh, I don't, I personally kind of feel that the patient's short of being here. And I haven't turned down any meetings, so.
I thought there was one just two weeks ago or so, that.
Almost.
On the third.
Yeah, that was the one where we scheduled it, he said that he would be out of town for, for a few weeks.
Right.
That was that conversation, and then a couple days later, he.
So, so one thing I would like to ask is.
Which, which question?
Is it for, you, you said, you had two questions, maybe I.
Yeah, we don't have any direction on the pay window, so we kinda just left that whole thing open, so we're, I'm not sure if we need to do, uh, I would imagine we're, we're gonna need some sort of, uh, way here. You know, there are ADA requirements in terms of that window, these opening height, uh, so I'm just gonna have to.
I think our understanding is just, you know, like.
Have something solid.
Show up and raise.
It can be fixed glass, just a six inch.
Fixed glass.
Okay. Okay, sure. Okay.
Is this for the kitchen?
No.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And that's something that, that you guys, uh, you know, I can give you some options, and then you guys can select, we don't really have any.
Yeah, it's just a little micro security.
Understood, yeah, yeah.
So I'm assuming that was the whole process in either?
Uh, so we're, basically what we are missing is the, uh, this window right here, and then whatever we wanna do for this lunch thing, I don't know, are you guys planning on serving meals out of the, okay.
So which way is that?
Having an open room for a kitchen.
So, with, with these doors out here, uh, we can kind of, we, we can adjust these to whichever way you guys want. Uh, off the top of my head, I mean, you. So, these plans are always adjustable to whatever you guys would like. Uh, so if you guys don't like the way that this door's planned to open, uh, we can change it.
If you were wanting it to open inward, right?
I would make this home, I'd make this home.
I'd be happy just to open. Seriously, just, just, you have a, a serving window with a partial wall, kind of just serving, you know, twelve inches, sixteen inch shelf, and just leave the door open.
How do you, could this?
I think you would be able to keep the kids out of the kitchen.
Right.
Around the stove and, and that stuff.
In the back door.
Yeah.
Okay, half door, half door. Little three foot door.
Which is great, but we either need to have it open, so it opens into the, the utility operator, or that door jam needs to come out eighteen inches from that wall, which would mean that that, that door frame would have to move eighteen inches.
Kind of out towards the library?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I will say.
So kinda towards the, the water fountain, kind of the, the other way.
Little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
Right there, cause I originally.
Cause, cause the way the regulations are, as long as you have a sixty foot long area that's, that's clear, and it has to be in forty-two inches wide, forty-eight inches wide, it has to have like an eighteen inch gap for a handle. So if somebody in a wheelchair can roll up and reach the handle, you. So, but yeah, so if it opens outward, then that would solve that problem.
Sure.
That's what I would do, that would cost no extra, cause it's there, just add it open towards the library.
Yeah, and if it opens towards the bathroom, it might cover the window, if someone's coming in, that helps.
Uh, yeah, and typically with doors, so, you know, I think this was a, this was a. Kind of one of the reasons why I was chosen, because we, when we were putting this all together, there were still some things that we're unsure. Uh, and, and in terms of doors, what I do before we get to that point, we, I would, I would like to walk the drop side with somebody and mark it on the frame. You guys can, now, I mean, I'm happy to, to list them all out here today, cause that's how we'd like to operate, but I, I like to be in the field with people and do that on.
I think that's.
I think that's great, I hear.
And I think that just kind of, you know, as long as we're not changing something that's structural, that causes an increase in materials or extensive increase in time, happy to make a change, should accommodate whatever, then.
Sixteen inches.
Yeah, so, right.
Well, you really go.
Is it three inches or six inches?
I think.
They were saying three.
Well, was it, if, like you were saying, couldn't that be, well, that's what you wanted, you're just.
It's about three. So, I, I, guys, I gotta, I gotta be completely honest with you, since I have the medication, but I'm, I'm just gonna be dead, dead honest, so the, if you notice, the framing along the east wall runs, I guess, for here, it's gonna, the boards stick out like this. And then the rest of the boards around outside lay like this, so your difference is right here. We were, we were originally going to just tie into the, uh, tie into the, the metal that moves along the wall. Uh, so that is, is also an alternative, is to just remove some of that frame, some of the framing on the frame here, rather than getting into your office space. Tied into the metal frame, if that makes sense, I know you guys can't really see what I'm talking about, but, yeah.
You're just basically getting rid of each wall what you do.
I wouldn't wanna get rid of.
Not all of it.
We could, we absolutely could, but, you know, if we're talking, like, how far would you guys wanna come out from the end to create that, that turn radius?
Well, it'd need to be sixty, sixty, sixty by sixty.
Okay, yeah, the sixty by sixty, yeah.
So I, I think we have, what, like eight inches to the window, between where that frame is now and the, as the new painting, I mean.
As six by sixty, we'd draw.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't need much.
When you say the window, you're talking about this right here? Okay, yeah.
That's what I was gonna use, to, to bring this down, the age, we know, right, everybody can see it live.
Yeah.
And then there's a space in the two before, just before this, so if you add it to the four right there, and just push it out, you'd be in the same position, six inches over.
So I've.
Roughly six inches.
Yeah, I, I, I would, I think I'd advise against pushing into this room right here if we could.
Okay.
Uh, just because, like I said, you, I mean, you don't, to save from having to move the whole wall, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to do that, if that's what you guys decide, and if I think, if I understand you correctly, we'd have like a, it would go, so this would go over that way, correct? The whole entire wall?
I mean, that, in my mind, that's one thing, is, you know, you just disconnect it.
Yeah.
Reset it.
Okay, um.
Would be.
Well, I think, I think we need to walk.
That's agreeable.
Yeah, I hear what you're, I'm, I'm following you now, and, and I'm, I'm on board with walking and agreeing, but I understand what you're saying, okay.
Me, it's as long as sixty inches wide.
Turn around.
From the, with the drywall.
Yeah, yeah. So like, yeah, like a sixty by sixty.
And, and the six inches, that's just my number of, about what you have.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Shifted by that far.
Absolutely.
Like in that place, that's not a number that I'm buttoned for or anything, that's.
Completely understanding.
Arbitrary number of.
I apologize.
What I can see fits.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I got you.
So the other question I had is, I know that Brittany's here, you're full point of contact, but talking to her, it seems like she's kind of stymied. And kind of forced her role of a relay only instead of like a, uh, PM, is that a fair limit? That you're not, you're not able to, to make any decisions, even small ones, that you have any, any little thing.
There's a certain level of authority that I have of approving certain things.
Okay.
But, but the bigger projects, that could affect like the financial aspect of it or whatever, that has to be presented to the board.
So you do have some authority for.
Unless the board changes that, that decision.
I, I just wanna make sure you can be an effective PM, so that you don't have, you don't have to have this conversation very tiny. I, I just want to make sure you can be an effective PM so that you don't have, you don't have to have this conversation for a tiny little thing.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, to your point, that is where my flexibility becomes an issue, is it kind of opens the door for change here and change there. Uh, and like, like Rich, I know you had mentioned something about the stain in the concrete. Uh, and I think we like loosely talked about that.
And he said, fine, can't change it, no, anyways.
Okay. Uh, and, and in terms of anything that, that needs change, the change order that you have, uh, we don't even have to be that, uh, you know, that formal. If we don't want to, I mean, somebody signs off on that, so it's all in writing, it's all right there. Uh, it's as easy for me as an email. If somebody, you know, if you guys designate the decision maker, somebody has authority to approve things. And I get an email that says, we want to make this change and it's mutually agreeable and we both agree on it, then it's done.
I, I think I myself personally would rather stay with that, that change control form.
Okay.
All of that, just, just for chain of custody and, and, you know, historical referencing.
Okay, yeah, sure, sure.
But that's the role I'm, I'm used to, that's where I came from, so everything was agile and change control and.
That's where, oh, yeah. And I think, and again, speaking to the point of me being a little relaxed on those things at times, uh. Issues, so.
So then was that just our issues, was the turnaround at the end of the closet and the door going into the kitchen?
I believe.
That was all right.
About the offices.
Oh, above the office, that big empty spot right there, uh, to me, that's a lot of wasted space. Sure, I mean, we're gonna have to heat, heat and cool that wasted space, which is gonna raise our, uh, eventually, I think we discussed, maybe just put the wall all the way up. On that, I don't know why it was done that way, why it wasn't done that way, I wonder.
Yeah, and I, I feel like it was, if I recall correctly, it was for storage.
Yeah.
Was that supposed to be like a storage loft?
Is there an attic tree?
Few four inch plywood on the top. It's just gonna be rafters and we have to put the storage.
We, we can absolutely, I mean, that's gonna be an additional cost, but not much at all.
Yeah.
I say not much at all, I mean, you know, she could apply wood, it's a far more expensive.
Yeah.
Uh, gosh, I remember, I used to work at Lowe's and just the water and it was five dollars and eighty-eight cents still. And.
It's like fifty cent.
It's nuts.
Actually, I saw that new store with Carney, uh, it's twenty-five dollars for three.
Oh, I love that sheet.
That's cheap.
That's cheap.
That affects the.
What use?
Uh, with the gas station in, how many of there, they got all kinds of doors, XLV doors, every.
Oh, we're kind of a food store.
Uh-huh.
So.
So if we do have a storage loft though, aren't we gonna have to have some kind of stairs or something to it so people aren't trying to carry things up and down a ladder?
Yeah, we'll, we'll wanna.
Which we won't be able to do with that water fountain right there, that's gonna take up a lot of space.
Yeah, I don't necessarily think you, and I'll have to look into this, I don't have the answer off the top of my head. But if you start getting into full scale stairs, that's gonna create.
A lot.
Significant cost and time and money. So I can look into, uh, like a drop down ladder.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering about someone, you know, coming down with a ring of paper or a box of pens in one hand and having to come down a ladder one handed, you know, and just.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking about the heat and cooling costs.
Sure.
Doing that building.
Sure.
It's gonna be a lot.
Well, and.
Which was another question we had was on the insulation.
Okay.
Your two and a half, two inches of heavy foam insulation is only R twelve and a half to R eighteen.
Okay.
But that's what you're seeing, when it's R two and state codes is R thirty.
I will have to look further into that, I don't, I can't answer that question, but I can get it to you. Uh, what was, say that, say that again, so I can write it down. What?
Ceiling insulation.
Yep.
Is.
If, if it's, it's the same foam as the side walls, if it's, if it's two to two and a half inches that runs between R twelve and a half and R eighteen. If it happens to be three, it goes up to R twenty. And state code is what? R thirty for area, or a three eight.
Okay, so slow it down for me, like, like I'm a five year old, so ceiling insulation, if it's two, two, two and a half, two and a half inches.
Runs R twelve, R twelve and a half to R seventeen.
R twelve to R seventeen, and then what else were you saying?
If it's three inches, it runs just about R twenty-one. So you'd almost have to put another inch and a half of insulation up there to make it up to code.
Okay, uh, I will look into that, I, I hear where you're coming from.
And we can't see how thick it is, but from double, so I can't tell for sure what it's at.
So all of the, uh, all of the insulation is two inches, uh. Is what?
Two, two and a half, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if it expands a little, humidity and all that, uh, but that was, that's the plan is two inches, so. Uh, I, I'll certainly get back to you on that.
And one other question I had, it's nothing we can change at this point, or at least not without doing a really big extent. When we originally talked to you, we were talking about the slab for the building, had to be eighteen inches, eighteen inches in or twenty-four inches in.
Okay.
That slab's not, is that because of the post?
Um, so, I'll, and I will have to look back at the emails, but there are, uh.
Cause I know your, your foundation, your round post for each of the posts is in at least two and a half, three feet.
Yeah.
So that might change it, but I don't know what it does for the thing.
You know, I, I will look back at the emails and figure out exactly what we did there, because that was a very extensive conversation and engineer, inspector.
Yeah, because.
Yeah, we had to get, yeah.
Yeah, that was, uh, yeah.
Cause you poured your initial slab in the middle with the reinforcing at the top.
Okay.
And then came in and poured your final, but it wasn't dug any deeper around the outside edges.
Uh.
So it's only the depth of the two by six or, or about six and a half inches that you put it in there.
I see what you're saying, uh.
I know we had to have, the engineer said we had to put the piers in.
Yeah, so the, the, the piers and then.
Hi, now, what, what are you talking about, you said?
Yeah, you're talking about the kitchen edge, that's not what you're talking about, Richard.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
There's a, a slab, a normal floating slab, you come in, you go a little bit deeper on the outside for the frost, you also come in lighter with that, yeah.
Yeah.
And then you go up to your six inches and there was none of that on that slab.
Um, I, let me look back at my emails and see exactly what we, what we went with.
Uh, and the only thing, only explanation I could explain for it not being that way because of the piers you had to put in. Because they were past the two feet.
At, at a very basic level, the piers did affect that, uh, and it was reinforced on, on the post, to your point, that we're on the outside of the building. Uh, that was coordinated with Mr. Haley, the inspector, and, uh, the engineer. And I will, I will forward that to you guys, the decision that was made there.
So if it doesn't have an extra wide footer for, for the layment here, is that gonna cause problems down the road? It might, uh, uh, in the future, if they're considering that there's no weight on the slab, the slab is all on those piers.
We went way overboard with, uh, with, with engineering in terms of, uh, uh, stability. You guys are not gonna have an issue with the, with the slab whatsoever. Uh, and Mr. Haley was, Mr. Craig Haley was very adamant about that. That's, so, and this kind of speaks to some, some other questions that we brought up. So every. Every facet of this job will be inspected and assured that it's up to code. Uh, and the next time that happens is after, well, like, let's just start from the beginning. So, uh, the pad was inspected, the piers were inspected, the slab was inspected before it went in. Uh, and then the next inspection will be after the electrical is all roughened and plumbing, HVAC. Uh, apologies if I haven't addressed you, you're kinda, you're gonna keep going this way, not over here. Um. Nothing will, there won't be anything that you heard of, uh, and that's a little bit more than you asked for in your, your, your answer there. But the one thing that I can say in terms of your question is, uh, you're not gonna have any, uh, with any foundations.
So like they were, by the engineer and approved by the inspector, then it is, then it must be where it needs to be to have pass.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
It's like, it's just a few questions, that's one of the few questions I had, but a normal floating slab has that, not this did. But this had the piers that were in the, going over two feet. The other question was normally on a floating slab, you've got two inches insulation to put deep all the way around the slab, so the frost doesn't go underneath it anyway.
Yeah, we don't, that's, no, that's, that's probably, uh, I think you said maybe you came from up, up north.
I was.
Yeah.
And that, the frost line here is, is not quite what you guys had to deal with up there.
And the other question I had was, Brittany poured us, uh, email you sent her that included, talked about how you had to put in the high blow fountain. And then Charleston poured us the invoice, there's an engineering fee of fifteen hundred for the change order, is that?
Right.
Put just everything with the water, uh, the water fountain?
No, so, uh.
That was a slab, I think.
Yeah, well, so when the, that was the fee just for the. That's.
That's what's charged us. To do the water, to do the water, no.
No, to do.
For slab, or when she did the piers.
Cause it, they changed that over the years.
The engineering, so this should have been included, uh, it got, it was included, but it just got overlooked. Uh. Just an accounting oversight, so that's why that's right now. That doesn't have anything to do with the water fountain.
Okay.
Uh, and, and to that point, the, we really should have had the water fountain, uh. That should have been addressed on the change order with Mr. Haley, uh, when he let it into their, in, or into the change order.
Did you know all the pipes, everything went right?
Correct, yeah.
Oh, I mean, the water fountain's to go there, if that way you just move through different sections.
Oh, she's gonna have to get in the library, I mean.
Cause I don't really think.
Who do y'all recommend, say the desk is by the door?
Say what?
Who do y'all recommend, say if you don't have to do, that the desk is by the door, or check out that, like, closer to the door?
Just basically kind of to the opposite wall?
Yeah.
I know that's where she wanted a lot of her push shelves, so it might be something, we might need to bring her in and have a conversation and just find out what's the best.
I mean, we could always change around for our turn around shelves and all that, you know?
When we get the design, we just need to, you know, bust the, you know, and.
Cause the brand.
Yeah. So just kind of do that and just kind of shut down, help set up the layout and everything.
Right. Yeah.
Any questions?
And there's still a lot of room for shelves. There's still a lot of room for shelves.
Right, oh, oh, yeah, I know, so.
So then we're just looking at changing that end of the closet, so it's the sixty inch turnaround. And having the door going into the kitchen and making it come out, open it out into the library. Is that it?
And then you had your insulation question.
Insulation.
You were wondering about the wall. Were you talking?
Probably towards the window because where the water fountain's gonna be the other side.
So that's why you got, that's why you got. Otherwise, any current issues with clearance for the water fountain.
Exactly, I should.
I think she was wanting us to.
I mean, I'm thinking just, you know, forty inch counter.
Well, I think you're asking about the tissue, yeah, the tissue.
Yeah.
He's something, give us an option.
Oh, right here.
Flop.
Yeah, uh, with, can you, like, change? Yeah, so it's.
What are you talking about?
A little, talk to your boss, uh, drink.
You've got an open window, so it's kind of redundant.
Yeah, well, I mean.
For what, drop, for the drop offs?
Yeah. I take my bills into places, they've got the slot, but then they've got a little mesh.
Some of them just get banks and stuff, just have a legacy class with the circle cut out so they can hear you talk.
Is anyone gonna be, uh, is anyone gonna be, uh, speaking back and forth with the, with the window?
Oh, yeah, cause that's where it's coming, maybe it will or. Set up the policies and stuff like that.
Yeah, okay, uh.
And just let me ask you a few more questions.
Yeah.
Or when our board members want to come around, so.
Yeah. I will, like I said, I'll, I'll, I will, I think it would be best if I could send some options in, in email.
Yeah.
And did it put that way out, okay, really?
That also.
The kitchen servant, we know, I mean, they suck needs.
How about, it's pretty open.
That's what they were talking about, like, from the store, trying to come roll down there though.
Yeah, that, too, just like a little, like a.
Right.
Talk, yeah, uh.
And then maybe just open that and serve the food.
And if we could talk in the actual plans, we guys have worked on, just so we can have it.
Okay.
You know, what if, you know, five years from now, we want to use, we want to make an addition or alterations to what we, we want to have those plans to look at.
Sure, yeah.
So this first invoice, um, that, all that's already covered with the grant money that we already have in the building.
Yes, I will do, that's what I was mentioning.
Okay. Do we have a portion of that, do we have it covered?
Uh, there's forty thousand of, uh, like in times, but we already have much of that already covered.
Sorry, say that again?
We have forty thousand, uh, what, uh, of, of parts.
Three hundred and eighty.
Well, we've already, yeah.
Some of that.
Okay. Like when a county helps us, if they're kind of one of these, they say, so we're still, so we're still gonna charge plus that upstairs. And there's other, all the things on that.
Are you seeing that in budget though, is that just in a council or somewhere?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's. That's the, the.
And grant people have the money, yes, to hurt costs like that also.
Now, the doors are gonna be glass or the doors up, the ones you're gonna have?
Which doors?
The doors on the building?
That's supposed to be closed.
Yeah, you're talking about on the front, like going in, yeah, those are temporary doors that are right there. Uh, so I will, I will send you guys some options there also. Uh, and, and we also need to choose, uh, a style on all the interior doors, so, and that's part of the trim package. All, all of that is part of the trim package.
So there's that giant slab in front of the library door, right? There, like, that patio.
Mm-hmm.
Was there gonna be any kind of ramps or anything?
Yeah.
Or, or was that whole area to be brought up to fill up to the point of the, the doors?
So I, that's what I'm glad you brought that up, because one thing I had never addressed, briefly addressed was parking. Uh, there, that, that's something that we're gonna have to really try to figure out. You know, obviously we have to provide access. Uh, I think kind of our loose conversations over here was maybe like, uh, maybe sticking the, the, your trash cans over here. Uh, and then having some sort of access right here. And then this area right here mostly being parking, so what we're, what I'm gonna need from you guys is how you would like this building to get access. And that's, and that's something that has never been discussed, uh, I shouldn't, I shouldn't say never, again, but briefly discussed.
So I know we were talking about maybe, you know, opening up bids for sidewalk or anything. So I know we were talking about maybe, you know, opening up bids for sidewalk apartments. I know you are really raring to go and it's kind of possible out here.
I got an estimate, if you want to go with it.
Right, so I did look up the code though, we don't have to have pavements. We're allowed to be on gravel as long as we don't have four, either four or more, or more than four designated parking spaces. So if we don't have the concrete colors in front, we don't have posts, we don't have anything that says this is a parking space, we don't have to have it on that firm, stable surface. For now, and then, you know, we can look at a grant later and get a nice blacktop, padded lines, handicap spots and all of that.
Which I think that's what we had discussed on the road.
It was discussed.
But while we don't designate, if we designate the parking spots, then we're gonna be.
I got, I shouldn't use the word never.
I got an estimate today on my phone, I made AAA paving.
Okay, why isn't that, why?
Just turn around, see what, what they chart. And he would do thirty some feet from the building, blacktop, to come around the library to the front door. Make a minimum of three handicap spaces with the stop blocks. And have at least three to four feet in front of them for a sidewalk on the blacktop around the door.
Now you know that, that estimate's gonna be happy to get thrown away though, right?
I know.
Okay.
And then he'd do the rest of the parking lot, the gravel and parking lot, total seventeen thousand.
One one sixty-five hundred.
Well, that, that includes the whole blacktop though.
Right.
I mean, the whole parking lot.
I mean, that's a good price, but the town doesn't have that kind of extra money.
Until we get the grant thing figured out, and then maybe try to get some grants for that and do that, I love that.
But you're gonna have to have something there. He's gonna do the gravel for the whole parking lot, plus blacktop for a four spot.
Right.
With the stop block.
I like the idea, I just don't know how we're gonna pay for it.
Yeah. We have to ask, well, we'd say other bids if possible, except if you have some concrete bids in, whatever they come in as.
Can we not just do the gravel for now, that way we can get the building plans going and then?
No, we need somebody else to talk, you know, figure out my cost.
Say that again?
I talked to two other, two other people that are gonna give me a day with the whole gravel with cost. Currents was really expensive, they were seventeen thousand.
Because they charged for not just the product, but mileage.
Yeah, I know.
Cause like forty-six or another fifty mileage.
Yeah.
And that was two years ago.
Yeah.
I know. But they're the most wolf of blacktop people other than this AAA.
Yeah, I totally understand, yeah.
At least, yeah.
I mean, no matter what we do, we're gonna have to put on it and, uh. We have to bid anyway.
And then open up bids and all of that anyway, so.
So for now, we need to figure out, like you said, what we could do now to access the building with something to get us by. Until we could get grant money or something to do the.
What do you need from us though, to be able to work on the building?
Right.
Change order, one of the things signed.
In order, in order to proceed, uh, yeah, we need the change order signed and, uh.
I mean, about the, about with the parking and everything, do you need any information on that?
No, and, and I would, I would ask that nothing in terms of that gets done, that is a, a final grade.
Right.
So that way, you know, we can level everything out, get it all ready for you guys, cause if you go putting. Well, I mean, it, it, I guess it does, in terms of need, don't really need anything per se. But if, if you guys are going gravel, which I have to walk back what I said, we did discuss gravel briefly, we didn't include it in the budget. But it's best to start putting a base layer down as soon as you can.
Right.
Uh, which if you use gravel, that's, that area gets, it gets muddy, uh, obviously. But it's not like you just sink in it, so I would say something like a.
Six inch, like a one and one and a half.
Yeah, yeah, like a, and I was thinking maybe three, maybe a three, like a three inch crusher run and then a one and a half over the top of it. And that's something you guys can use whomever you'd like. But I can probably get you some pretty good prices on that too.
We still have to go through the whole process of opening up for bids and advertising.
Okay, sure, sure.
Cause any, any things we get before that, we can't, we can't even look at, so.
I see, okay, that's a, okay.
Can we set a three inch crusher run?
Uh, so a base level, a base layer of three, three inch crusher run. And then inch and a half on top of that.
Little shoulders on the road are two to quarter inch.
Yeah, I'm, I don't love the three quarter, I mean, that, you could, I would, I would probably, to your point, go a mixture of like an inch and a half or a quarter, or just be all three quarter.
And I need an empty two feet of wheelchair accessible, so I have to go down some smaller.
Yeah, that's a good point. Uh, what, what about the, what about the sidewalk that was proposed to go around the building?
We, uh, they had, uh, asked me to get quotes for the sidewalk.
And that's something, so if that gets approved, please don't do that, go after, have the building finished.
Right, yeah.
That'd be one of the very last things. So in terms of your, of your question, the change order needs signed. And I would love to go up and check. Doesn't have to be today necessarily.
Do you, when did, when are you estimating to be done? Just for those of us who knew the board.
You know, we, we, I feel, give me a couple of days to give you the answer on that. I feel better having spoke with you guys, just with the transition. And I don't want, I don't want to speak negatively in any way about the previous board members. But just the transition, I was unsure, and I didn't want to plow forward without talking to you guys, so, uh, give me a few days and I'll get you.
Right.
You gotta go quick, once we have direction, I mean, it'll go, it'll go fast.
Well, the, the Amazon boxes later, can we leave the sidewalk and everything up first?
Well, no, but it's, it's, well, that's what we're talking about.
I mean, you already told about the, you already told about the little rock.
I emailed him like a little packet thing.
So, so we're good there.
Okay, yeah, I got it.
And we do have to talk about the water meter.
Yeah, the water in the building.
No, we're trying to get a water meter placed in there. The, I've had a couple of people come out and look at it, and Agar came over and tried to do their thing of like locating the old lines that used to be there, but they couldn't find any.
There is a, I was just over there mowing, and, uh, there is two spots right there and that, I don't, it, it could be from the, where the tin horn is and the drive that they built going into it. But it's, I'd say it's almost about four foot deep and maybe this wide, e- each maybe four foot long.
What is?
A, a culvert, or I guess where the water ate it out or something.
Are you talking about by the building?
No, not by the building, right there, right there, as soon as you come off the road, like I'd say, probably about four, four, five foot off the road, coming into it, the, the old, the old. Not, it's the old drive, not the one to the park, the one going into the building. Yeah, it's been, it's, it's washing out, well, there, there's a pipe showing up, uh, right there somewhere.
Yeah, cause there's the, the old tin horn clocks right there.
So is that what that is, just the, okay, where it's washing out still around it?
Ooh, breadcrumbs, right?
Agar came out, I couldn't, I couldn't locate, I already, Jimmy had came out for a little bit, but, um, they couldn't, they hit on a couple of spots, but when they went to, like, dig it up or whatever, they couldn't find anything. And on our maps where our water lines are located, which is one I gave you guys a while ago, it shows that our, uh, the green lines is on there, there's, you know, actually one, there's a little, um, zoom in a little bit more. You can tell where the, the building pad is, the green is our sewer lines. And then our water line is right south of one oh five along that roadway.
The purple?
And then the purple. And then also that one right there on second, they're just, the colors is just a different size, one's a four inch, one's a two inch.
So you said the green is? The green is the sewer?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the four inch right there is, we would have to bore under the road to be able to tap into that, uh, water line. To be able to set a water meter, and Agar says that what they looked at when they inspected that area, the, where that pole is going right through the park drive. Uh, locating that water meter somewhere in that area would be the best for what they, what they can, um, check on that area.
For us to put the water meter? So can we go off that two inch pipe then on Second Street? And now we don't have to bore under one oh five?
Um.
Boring, boring into the highway is not that big a deal.
No, wouldn't we have to bore under Second Street, cause the line is on the other side.
Yeah, but that, that's a lot.
And that's also where there's a, yeah, there's a bunch of, uh.
They go through the ground.
Yeah, they've got another garage, so. So we need to figure out what we're doing with that, I can say, um.
What's the, the one across from one oh five, how big is that line? And four inch?
I mean, ideally it's compared to it anyway, and it's not that big, yeah, we want to go for the bigger lines.
Right.
Also, I gotta give the highway department, make sure we advise them.
Yeah. That's where I'll take them.
And I kind of touched base with them when we were talking about the driveway permit, where he said, I want to just get closer to the phone, it's not that far. I want to get some closer, just to touch base with him, but I got his, uh, permit in the mail the other day, so I can just get some information.
So water may be hooked up before the inspector can come in and we can put all the plumbing and everything?
We need water as soon as possible, that's part of that change order, absolutely.
So we gotta get that done?
Don't necessarily need the, the water per se, we need to tap them so they can get to it when they're ready.
Right.
We'll, we will have to, uh, pressurize everything, make sure it holds and all that good stuff, so I would say that is a, I can factor that into, to the timeline that I'm gonna give you. Yeah, we need it.
Didn't you have a question about the water lines outside the back door? Like the kitchen door? Like where the water lines?
Yeah, where's the water lines going into the building? Where the hole was? That's what I'm saying, so that sidewalk, wherever there's a sidewalk. I don't know, there's water line, is it right down the edge of the building or is it?
I have to, yeah, not possible without the, right there.
Right now it's about sixty, the building ends got about twenty foot open, so you could put it all the way.
Yeah, you could move it.
I just want to go with the sidewalk, because there are breaks.
I understand, yeah. Would you, yeah, I guess it, you, you were saying you wanted on the inside and the outside of the sidewalk?
Outside, outside, yeah, there are breaks. We don't have to take up.
Make it easy for our utility operator, what?
That sounds nice.
So you said that change order about getting water hooked up, where do you think this is? Is that, this one, the, just number three, this man, that one we seen on that one is the, uh, the water fountain?
Yeah, this, that was mine.
Well, okay, yeah, no, I'm, that's, what I said was incorrect, but the, the water tap, that's not a change order, but you guys have put all that.
Yeah, we own the first fifteen.
That, there's no, excuse, excuse my mistake.
You just need us to do, right, still that?
Correct, no costs, nothing.
Does that need to be done before you guys get, keep construction progress?
Uh, we can.
But it should be on the bills.
We can go, uh, we, we just need it before, to your point, the inspection. That way we can, uh, water everything up.
Is that scheduled every time you report the inspection?
We really don't.
So are we gonna have to have water to it before like she brought those up, so you could make sure that the?
Yeah. Yeah, we can't cover anything up until then, Mr. Hiley comes in and expects everything.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that is kind of a necessity then?
It is, but they can still keep working.
We can still keep, yeah.
Next you're sending the generated number.
Yeah, I would.
Considerations, got your action on the building project.
If, if you guys can't do that, I mean, I think obviously it's far too late, I mean, we're, we're talking, this building's gonna be done quickly. So if we, if a few of these items, uh, finalize, then it is gonna fly together. I guess the, the only reason why I said it shouldn't say it's too late, I just, I don't know what the, my experience in working with city utilities.
Dude, I'm starting to, hey, I'm learning all this, I'm, I'm new to everything.
It's moved exceptionally fast.
But that's gonna be different here.
So. It's an urgent matter.
Okay, so that.
It's not gonna slow us down. Yeah, and we're not gonna be ready for that test in two weeks, so that's not what I'm saying.
Right.
So what do you need from us, where can you get this going?
Um, I just need to get to the back there.
It's there.
Well, I think, uh, they just have to call, places that they have to get, uh, quote, uh, just.
Right.
Call, set up something. Yeah.
No doubt. I think you need to decide where you want to go, which line you want to tap it.
I tap into the bigger line.
And I did call, uh, my, my county, and came forward, some, our team on that. He said he's got a couple of projects in front of us, and I told him to deliver, he said whenever we're scheduled, I'll, you know, let us know.
Do we do that? Johnny will do it, yeah.
Y'all have gotten really quiet, we can't hear y'all.
It's not the agenda we can actually do an action on right now, man. All we have to, yeah, I'll talk out.
Yeah.
All we have to do is get a motion from somebody and say that we have to do these following things, get this building done. And get first authorization to get some ordered, cause if we wait until August eighth to do it, it's gonna be another three weeks after that before this gets done, Roger.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And then pass one the time.
I just know that those are the things that I have to do, like I have to call on the dedication. I don't know if you guys want me to present the books to you guys, or how do you guys approach me?
Or how about you make these calls, get these quotes, and make all this special meeting next week? And hopefully we can get the process built. Or the end of the week, just whenever.
If we, if we call the commission board of that, can they call and work this meeting, cause it's, it's in a, it's financially.
Yes.
I know, I know, some of this stuff, you know, my house, now, if we just have to quit and decide that something, it would be connected or something like that, I would power it with, about six.
Probably gonna happen in that ditch right there. Cause there's water leak further, I see there.
Yeah, water fountain.
And it's, it like sinks.
Yeah, yeah, that's definitely, that's what I'm saying, with all these leaks we have.
And if I had to wait, give you the, I can give you two, but right now, like, the way it is in my department.
So I guess my question is, do we need to have a special meeting or are we able to bring the authority to, to encirc the price or anything? Or should we do this, you guys told me I, I, the board didn't get scared so.
We have no idea what it's, what it costs.
I think what needs happening, like you were saying, contact, whoever you need to contact, get, get the number information, give us some numbers. We have a call, a meeting next week, a special meeting next week. Get it's with Oki for digging, get that done, get the state highway department involved, make sure it's cleared with them.
So we get that all, the works this week?
Do you, I'll get it, you're ready?
He's gonna take some of it.
That way at least it'll be involved with him to, yeah, mark everything that on there. That way, we have, we have this meeting next Monday.
We have everything lined up?
We have everything lined up.
So our next hope is you have to have a meter put on.
So that's, where, well, you could actually do what you need to do on your side of the line, of the south highway, that way you're ready for the meter. All we gotta do, get with Agar, whoever, whoever. Get down, put the, you know, the distance that you need to meet with your meter, your.